I'd like to call to order this hearing of the Senate Education Committee. The first bill that we will hear hearing on is Senate Bill 405 relating to the powers and duties of the Board of School Directors and the Superintendent of Schools in a first-class city school district, awarding a grant to a nonprofit corporation, requiring a referendum and granting rulemaking authority. I'd like to call up first to testify Senator Taylor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are in a pit, and I am stepping forward. Honorable Chairman Lehman and members of the Senate Committee on Education, thank you for the opportunity to speak today about an issue that is of the utmost importance for the children, community, parents, taxpayers of Milwaukee, and residents of the state of Wisconsin. And education is the number-one tool that we can give our students to overcome the challenges that face our city with devastating poverty being the greatest. So many of us in the legislature enjoy a sound education which opens the doors to new adventures, new careers, and new outlooks in life. I'm no different. My life as a high school student in Rufus King was well-spent. Well, maybe I could have studied a little more. When I wanted to quit, and my mother made me go, it was so I could go to college, then to law school, then into practice, and on to elected life. Without a sound educational system and parental involvement, my life would be marked rather differently today. The importance of education, both in my life and in the life of every child in Milwaukee, has led me to two very important conclusions. First, the governance structure of MPS is structurally broken and has not and cannot rise to meet the challenges placed before it. Second, Wisconsin must take a step to change this governance structure with a model that has worked to produce marked change and improvement in the educational outcomes of children. The Milwaukee Teach Act, or SB 405, is the product of those conclusions. The Teach Act, or Milwaukee Transform Education for All Our Children Act, is a compromise bill representing the transformational change that Governor Doyle and Mayor Barrett called for, and the importance of maintaining an elected school board, which is a value that Representative Cologne and I insisted on and included. Transformational change of a school system for our children is the fundamental goal of this legislation, a goal that is rooted in the needs Milwaukee has and the change that President Obama has issued to us in Race to the Top application process. Milwaukee Public Schools are in need of transformational change. They cannot address the crisis that we have. Look at the facts. No one can doubt them. The data about MPS's educational performance is dismal. Milwaukee Public Schools is a school district that has been characterized as a district in need of improvement, or DIFI, not because we failed one year, two, three, four, but five years consecutively. And frankly, of seven years, we failed six. But one year, when they changed the standards, we didn't fail that year, when they reduced the standards. But we failed five years consecutively, and based on the results that have happened for the last five years, it's believed that we will be failing for the sixth year when those results come out. Over 70% of 10th graders in MPS did not achieve proficiency in math or reading this past year, according to DPI. At least 50% didn't. The new report from the National Center for Education Statistics shows Milwaukee's 4th and 8th graders test worse in math than most of their counterparts in the urban districts around the nation, 4th graders only scoring better than the children from Detroit. Our minority achievement gap is the worst in the nation in 8th grade, reading, and second-worst in 4th grade reading. We had the second-worst achievement gap in 4th and 8th grade mathematics compared to the rest of the nation. How embarrassing. This is a moral obligation that we have. We all know these are not new problems for MPS. Rather, they have been the outcomes that unfortunately we have come to expect. People should be shocked, but we have come to accept it. The very crucial element of any system is the ability to react to the problem with bold and transformational fixes. This crucial element is missing in MPS. So we must change the system. In moving away from the system that has long tolerated these outcomes, the Milwaukee Teach Act provides mayoral accountability, one point of accountability, consistent leadership over the school system in Milwaukee. Milwaukee will join with other districts such as Boston, Chicago, New York, Cleveland, that have mayoral accountability in places that have marked gains and improvements in their outcomes, especially in the lowest quartile of students. Please, don't take my word for the success of mayoral accountability. Read Dr. Wong's study that looked at 100 school districts across 40 states, and see it for yourself, but consider these facts. Boston began in 1993. Their test scores have shown steady gains in student achievement every year since mayoral accountability. They've doubled their gains in proficiency in math and reading for 10th grade between 2003 and '06. In Cleveland, reading proficiency, 29% gain for 10th graders from 2004 to '06, when they started in 1997. In New York, they narrowed their achievement gap in math. A 12.5% gap was narrowed, and reading to 6.4. All I'm saying is that research shows that these systems have given us different outcomes, and they provided the basis for creating change in those districts. The lack of consistent vision and leadership is unfortunate and is the failing part of our governance system. Under the Milwaukee Teach Act, there will be a consistent vision and plan for education in our city. The mayor facing the voters of the city every four years will be responsible for appointing a superintendent to create an educational budget and manage our city's school system. With this new policy, a vision and plan can be allowed to be created to change what we all wish to see, which is better outcomes and accountability for our children in MPS. In transforming our education system, the need and the value of an elected school board is fully recognized. As I stated at the beginning of my testimony, a solid educational plan and parental involvement part should be kept in the system. Under the Milwaukee Teach Act, the school board alone has the power and freedom to become the parental ombudsman to the school system. The board will create and manage all aspects of parental involvement after-school, community, programming, and pupil discipline. In addition, the board would be able to advise on the selection of the superintendent, on matters related to instruction and the progress of students. To those who say that this plan neuters the school board, I respond that now, more than ever, the school board can best serve its constituents by becoming the advocates of parents, students, and the community, helping them to navigate the system. There are more important points in this legislation that we need to talk about today, like the reauthorization portion of the legislation, which would allow taxpayers in Milwaukee to have the opportunity to reauthorize or mayoral accountability of the schools in April of 2017. If this system works, voters can retain it. If not, they can change it. Financial and Budget Advisory Commission. The Milwaukee Teach Act requires that a commission of six members serve as an advisor to the superintendent on budget development, and receive and review the annual GAMP audit of the district, members including the city comptroller, the comic council president, the school board president, and other designees. But the most important part to me is the Milwaukee Children's Zones. It gives us an opportunity to wrap services around young people. It gives us an opportunity to do better collaborative services in neighborhoods and to create that, and to be able to address the needs that we know exist in children who have poverty, their families have poverty issues. It gives the opportunity for community involvement. This is a part of the plan that is modeled after the Harlem Children's Zones that have, you know, great success. Just a few more moments. It is also apparent that in this legislative discussion, that there are many misconceptions that we must address. There isn't enough time today for me to be able to address them all, but I want to address a few. First, it is not undemocratic to make a mayor, elected by the people, responsible for the schools in Milwaukee, who can collaborate services. It's not. More people exercise their right to participate in our democracy when electing a mayor than a school board. It's an issue important to both Representative Cologne and myself. Second, this bill is not an attack on unions. Not only is it not an attack, but one subject that you need to, that one point you need to understand is that this bill, not one part of it prohibits collective bargaining. It doesn't take away a worker's right to unionize and have collective bargaining. It maintains that. The Teach Act changes the actor, though, in the bargaining, from the board to the superintendent. Third, the Milwaukee Teach Act is not, and has never been, a pro-school choice or charter bill. You will quickly notice that the only time that the Milwaukee Parental Choice Program is even mentioned is in one place, which is on page 36 of the bill, and that's only because in current law, it's in that section of the bill, and so it just corresponds in that way. Fourth, to say that this transformational change is not an element of or important to our state's Race to the Top application is to avoid the painfully obvious facts. It is accurate that Wisconsin needs to make no changes to MPS governance to qualify for Race to the Top funds. However, making no change greatly hinders the success of our application, because one of the things that you have to show is that when you do change, that that change will be able to be consistent and maintained. That is a problem that our present structure does not allow, has not allowed. It is readily apparent to any person who reads the Race to the Top application, or has listened to the President, or the Education Secretary, Arne Duncan, the people making the Race to the Top decisions, that the administration is seeking evidence of a massive transformational change that will add weight to a state's application. It's the two words that our President said, "transformational change," when he came to Wisconsin. I am confidently saying that without transformational change to MPS, every school district in Wisconsin is threatened with the loss of Race to the Top funds. To close, there are no quick fixes. I don't suggest that governance change is a silver bullet. There are no easy answers to this crisis. It's significant. But we have never argued mayoral governance is an easy solution or one that would be entered into lightly. It is clear, however, that struggling urban districts like Milwaukee have seen results under this form of governance. We cannot continue to wait. Our children cannot wait. Unemployment is difficult for a company if children are not prepared when they come out. Wisconsin and every district in Wisconsin cannot wait. I ask for the scheduling of a vote, Mr. Chairman, of this bill, and your favorable consideration so that the legislature may act on this bill prior to January 19th, the Race to the Top deadline.
Now, it's my honor to introduce the mayor of the great city of Milwaukee, Mayor Tom Barrett.
Thank you, Secretary Morgan. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I want to thank each and every one of you, as well as those of you who are not on the committee but have taken the time out of your busy schedules to be here this morning for this very important hearing. I think the people in this room should know just how impressive it is that this many senators have come to Milwaukee for this hearing. This is something that I have witnessed throughout my career, and it's rare to see this many senators come. So it, I think, underscores the importance that you view this issue with, and I just, again, want you to know how much I appreciate that. To me, this issue is very, very personal. This is my neighborhood. I grew up about three blocks from here. I still live three blocks from here. This is the city where I've raised my family, and I love the city, and I care about its future. I want to talk a minute about what's happened to this city. I grew up here when there were many, many jobs for people with low educational achievement. We had great jobs for people who worked in breweries, or tanneries, foundries, factories. And year by year, those jobs began to disappear. First, they disappeared to southern states, then they disappeared to Mexico, then they disappeared to China. And what's changed now is that we simply, in this community, do not have enough jobs for people with low educational attainment. The jobs do not exist in this city right now. And it's something that I'm unhappy with. It's something I think many citizens who are here are unhappy with, and it's something that, as policymakers, I think we all have to be concerned with. And as I see it, we're faced with a choice. We either accept the fact that we are going to have more and more and more poverty in this community because we do not have enough jobs with people with low educational attainment, or we challenge ourselves, like we as a community have never challenged ourselves before, and say, "We are going to raise the educational attainment in this city." To me, it's that stark a choice. Those are the two options that we have before us. And there is no question that this legislation, and those of us who are involved in this, are saying, "We simply cannot embrace the status quo. We have to challenge ourselves like we have never challenged ourselves before." What's interesting about this debate is that we have wonderful people on both sides of this issue. Again, speaking personally, there are people that I've worked with for over 25 years who are diametrically opposed to the position that I have taken here. And they are people for whom I have great respect, because I believe that they care about the children in this community. In fact, I think virtually everyone who is involved in this debate cares about the children in this community. And at the end of the day, that's what this has to be about, is what is best for the children who live in this community. But where are we now? We are challenged like we have never been challenged before. I am a parent of kids who have attended and do attend the Milwaukee Public Schools. I'm a very happy consumer of the Milwaukee Public School system, but I know how to navigate the system. And that word is so important, "navigate," because if you are a parent who does not know how to navigate this system, or chooses not to navigate this system, your child may end up in a school where he or she statistically is bound to fail. And we cannot afford to do that. There are great schools in this system. There are great teachers in this system. I'm married to one of them, and they are committed to these children. But we cannot accept the status quo in terms of the direction that this district is headed. So what can we do? Who is accountable? And I think that's the underlying tenet of this legislation, that for the first time, we would have someone who is accountable for the educational outcomes in the Milwaukee Public Schools. I said that this issue is very personal, because it's personal about the kids. At the other end of the spectrum, though, it's not personal at all. And what I mean by that is I think that the men and women who have served and do serve on the Milwaukee School Board are doing the best that they can, that they care about the kids. Again, this is not a situation where people don't care about the children. But we all have to take a step back, and we've all heard the statistics. Senator Taylor has shared them with you. Representative Cologne has shared them with you. Secretary Morgan has shared them with you, in terms of the failure rates within this district. We cannot ignore that anymore. We simply cannot do it, because if we do, the kids who will be in school in 2012, or 2016, or 2018 will not be able to get jobs where they can support their families. So I do support this legislation very strongly, because I think it's important that we take a dramatic step to challenge ourselves. Is it a silver bullet? Absolutely not. Is it going to remedy the other problems that we face as a city? Absolutely not. And so you understand this, and I think many of us who don't have the poverty or the transient lifestyles that many kids have in this school district, they are facing challenges that are greater than the children that you have personally, or many of the children that you represent. There's far too much poverty. There are far too many teenage pregnancies. There are far too many transient families that move from school year to school year, sometimes many times during the same school year. Those are huge, huge, huge obstacles to success. But they cannot be reasons for us to accept failure. They explain why the challenge is greater. We can never allow them to allow us to accept failure. So this legislation, again, creates a very accountable system, and it puts the onus on the mayor. And it's not about Tom Barrett, it's about the mayor. It's a public policy decision as to which elected official is elected by the most individuals, is the best-known, has to be the most responsive, and it says, "You are the person that we are going to hold accountable to improve education in this community." And if it doesn't work, the legislation has built into it a very important safeguard. And that safeguard is it goes directly to the people through a referendum. And if the people do not want this change, they can revert to the current system. So it respects the democratic process, both in terms of having the elected official, the mayor being the person who is accountable, and also allows direct involvement from the citizens of this community. But I believe that we have to take dramatic action, and if we don't, we are faced with the specter of more and more challenges coming to us through an educational nature, as well as a fiscal nature for this district. So I, too, ask you to move forward in a positive fashion on this legislation for the children of this city. Thank you very much.
I guess questions for the author, or authors. Why not go to referendum first? I just, I'm curious.
Two reasons, Senator Urbanbach. One, January 19th is the deadline for the Race to the Top application. Two, because 8,500 young people start in elementary. By the time they get to middle school, we have 8,300. By the time they get to 10th grade, we have 3,000. Of the 3,000, 1,500 can't read, and only 1,000 can do 10th-grade math. They can't wait.
You know, I just think that, again, we didn't just show up at this podium today. This comes from a long experience of trying to share these concerns with the board, or either they haven't been able and equipped to handle the challenges, and the challenges keep getting worse and worse. I frankly don't think we have time. We don't have the time to wait for another budget to show, frankly, and we all come from our experiences, some of us are, you know, are state legislators, as you are. That is, we have to craft policy that makes sense to the whole state. It's becoming increasingly difficult for me, given the numbers that Lena cited, for me to make a case for Milwaukee. So if you want to go to referendum, you'll, you know, the earliest I assume we can have it is, what, sometime next year, right? By then, the Race to the Top application will be gone, and in fact, all of the legislation introduced in Congress has the same sort of criteria. My view is that you're gonna, and I agree with Senator Taylor, you're gonna allow or disallow a lot of kids to make headway in math and reading and the basic courses. I mean, what you will find, you know, and I suspect a lot of testimony will revolve around democracy, poverty, a lot of the testimony against this will talk about crime, will talk about all the things that are not educational achievement. And so the issue today is educational achievement. And the issue today, I think both sides stipulate and agree, that is not very good, and we're all concerned. The question for us as state legislators is, is the status quo providing the answers to those challenges, or do we need to try a new course ASAP?
The question is, do you need both, or does the state superintendent take over, kind of fill the bill as far as Race to the Top goes?
It's very clear to us that Senate Bill 405, the bill that we're talking about here today, is essential to driving the kinds of changes that needs to be done here in the, in the city of Milwaukee for the kids of the city of Milwaukee. The governance structure that we're talking about gives the mayor and the superintendent the kind of tools necessary to put in place a good plan, and then drive that plan through the educational system here. The superintendent's bill that you're, the state superintendent's bill that you're talking about, would be additive and would be helpful to whomever the superintendent and the mayor might be in trying to get done some of those things that are important. But no, let's make no mistake about it, what we're talking about here in terms of the governance structure bill is something we think is critical to the importance of our ability to not just put a plan in place, but ensure that we have the people who can be held accountable, who are stable over time, to ensure that that plan gets done. That's simply not something that we've seen over the last two decades here in the city of Milwaukee. That's why we think this board structure that we currently have is not serving the children very well.
Senator Urbanbach, to address that issue, two things. One, the state superintendent bill, I also want to say is like preventative. It prevents us from getting in the situation that we are in now, in Milwaukee, and other districts that are DIFI districts, that are coming up in the rear, so that a state superintendent is able to prevent us from getting to this dire state that we're in in Milwaukee, in Beloit, which is coming right behind, and Racine, which is coming right behind there. The difference between the state superintendent bill and this legislation, SB 405, is that SB 405 allows local control on addressing the issues that exist in our district versus a state superintendent bill allows the state to come in and say what happens. And this is an effort, a compromise effort, to keep local control to address the issues that are in the district, and the state superintendent is the buffer to prevent other districts from ever having to go down our path.
We talk about every child's a graduate, and this statement of principle around which I have focused the department's work, and while there's much to be done across Wisconsin to make this a reality, I'm committed to ensuring that all schools provide the necessary opportunities for all kids to succeed. I believe it's critical for the state superintendent to have the authority to work with schools and districts that are struggling the most, places where student achievement levels are simply unacceptable over time. The department drafted this proposal with that in mind. This is the case in Milwaukee. I've been in education for over 34 years, and I've seen MPS through various boards go through a number of well-intentioned reforms. The powers contained in SB 437 are focused on building capacity and providing resources for MPS, creating a steady shift that will provide demonstrated results over time. In order to improve student achievement, close achievement gaps, and increase the graduation rate, we must target state and federal resources flowing into MPS and move forward with a sense of purpose. Many students are served well here, but to serve all the students well, MPS needs to get to a point of consistency and become a school system instead of a fragmented system of schools. This bill will help to accomplish those goals. This is also a goal stated by President Obama, who has linked federal funds on the Race to the Top to the state's legal, statutory, or regulatory authority to turn around struggling schools. This legislation would support that application requirement.
Now, I'd like to call up Senator Cogs and Representative Grigsby, the primary authors of LRB 4037/1.
Welcome to Milwaukee, and welcome to the 18th Assembly District, which I'm very proud to represent. I'd like to start off by thanking you, Chairman Lehman, and the members of the Senate Education Committee, and my Milwaukee colleagues for being here today. And I'd especially like to thank you for your true leadership in the decision to hold a public hearing on these proposals here in Milwaukee, where the impact of this bill will be felt the most. Senate Bill 405 is one of the most important bills proposed for Milwaukee in years, which is why this opportunity for community input is so vital. While many parents are unable to be here today to speak on this important issue, I am encouraged that so many residents of Milwaukee are here with us today now. First, it's very important that we recognize the issue at hand. Senate Bill 405 is about a mayoral takeover of our public education system, a hostile mayoral takeover. A hostile mayoral takeover of our public education system. In addition, it is very clear that Milwaukee Public Schools is in need of reform. No one denies that. No one says that because they don't support mayoral takeover, they support the status quo. That myth needs to be put to rest. No one denies that we need real reform, but that reform must be real, and it must be effective, if the necessary improvements are to be made. With that, it is important to recognize three important points. One, mayoral takeovers are not only ineffective, but have made public education worse for some students in other cities where this has taken place. Two, without defending the status quo, and while recognizing the need to implement reforms at MPS, we should also recognize the ongoing improvements that are currently being made. Three, there is a real alternative to education reform at MPS. No one defends the status quo. I'll say that several times before I sit down. But because we don't defend the status quo, Senator Coggs and myself have proposed a common sense alternative to reforming Milwaukee's school systems. Some advocates for mayoral takeover say that takeover is the only way to reform education. Both myself and Senator Coggs have maintained for some time that this is simply not the Let's just take a look in one city, the tale of one city. Let's look at Chicago, where mayoral control happened, and where our current Secretary of U.S. Education, U.S. Secretary of Education comes from. In Chicago, mayoral control is quickly becoming known as the new tyranny by education policy experts and activists alike. Former U.S. Assistant Secretary of Education Diane Ravitch, once a supporter of mayoral takeovers, now believes that this sort of, I can't talk, authoritarian, my goodness.
Authoritarian.
Authoritarian. Look, I'm here, you know, I'm doing my best. Control fails to justify itself. As a noted education historian and scholar, Ravitch now understands, and I quote, "If a superintendent is appointed by a mayor, his first obligation is to the mayor, not to the children." Ravitch's testimony against renewing mayoral control is perhaps the most compelling. She says that it needs change because it lacks accountability, it lacks transparency, it shuts the public out of public education, it has no checks or balances, it lacks the most fundamental element of a democratic system of government, which is public oversight. Again, this is her critique of mayoral takeovers, seven years after she originally supported a takeover in New York. But let's not only just take the words of education experts. Let's look at how public education has fared under mayoral control after 15 years in Chicago. Chicago is most often cited as an education success story. Again, it's where U.S. Secretary Arne Duncan led the public schools before his appointment with the Obama administration. It is also a city that has not benefited from mayoral takeover. The Commercial Club of Chicago, which is similar to our local Chamber of Commerce, is a group that originally supported the takeover of Chicago Public Schools. They have since become very critical of Chicago's mayoral takeover. According to the Commercial Club's most recent report, titled "Still Left Behind," the 2008 test data shows that most students in the Chicago Public School Systems continue to fail. Even after almost 15 years of mayoral control, most of Chicago's students drop out or fail. The vast majority of Chicago's elementary and high schools do not prepare their students for success in college and beyond. And I'm quoting directly from the report at this point, and again, this is a group that originally advocated for Chicago's mayoral takeover in the first place. Most troubling, the reported gains in test scores in Chicago appear to be false, and result from the manipulation of data. Recent dramatic gains in the number, reported number of CPS elementary students who meet standards on state assessments appear to be due to changes in the tests rather than real improvements in student learning. In 2006, Illinois changed state standards testing procedures and made changes to the skills test itself, resulting in a falsified boost in testing scores. According to the Commercial Club, school achievement at CPS, Chicago Public Schools, appears to be due mostly to changes in tests and testing procedures rather than improvements in student learning. The director of this organization says that many states have lowered scores on standardized tests to create the public appearance they are meeting federal standards. This practice sells students short. Attached to my written testimony, you will find details, charts, and data that help to support the evidence of this manipulated, these manipulated data. While achievement misleadingly appears to have jumped the standardized NAEP scores tell a very different story about student performance under mayoral takeover. The performance of Chicago's high schools is abysmal, with about half the students dropping out of the non-selective enrollment schools, and more than 70% of 11th grade students failing to meet standards in math, reading, and science. In many of Chicago's high schools, not one student in the 11th grade is on track to succeed in a college-level math or science course. This is after 15 years of mayoral takeover of Chicago Public Schools. The only Chicago students prepared for college are concentrated in Chicago's selective enrollment schools, not the conventional public schools that are the overwhelming majority of the city's youth. In 2008, only 8% of Chicago's high schools exceeded the state standards benchmark established in the federal law by No Child Left Behind. We have to want something better than this when it comes to our children in Milwaukee. Let's talk about present day. We all know that we have some issues, and we know that we have some problems, and I'll say it again for the record. I do not support the status quo, and I don't think anyone in this room does. Let's talk about what some of those problems are. Unfortunately, Milwaukee is internationally recognized as the most segregated city in the United States. In addition to segregation, Milwaukee sees astounding disparities in every aspect of life. We're ranked the fifth worst in black male joblessness, 47.1% black male unemployment, and this was before the economy hit its record low. Black male joblessness now is now rumored to be around 60% in Milwaukee. Here in Milwaukee, we have the greatest disparity between black and white employment in the United States. Disparities in income, when you look at the third ward in Milwaukee, the 2005 average income compared to Milwaukee's inner-city 2005 average income, the third ward income was $60,710. The inner-city income was $26,104. Racial disparities in Wisconsin's criminal justice system, we don't even have time to start talking about. The black infant mortality rate, we lead the nation. And more, the point is that the disparities we face are not only in education. So we all recognize that we have a colossal task ahead of us. How do we educate our children? How do we do it effectively? How do we produce citizens who are able to contribute to our society? And how do we reduce these embarrassing disparities that we face in this state? Despite these disparities, however, we should take a close look at what the newest MPS Board of Directors has done to improve the quality of education in Milwaukee. In a very short time, we have increased the number of math and science requirements from two to three years. We've expanded nursing services in public schools, a service that was once provided by the city of Milwaukee. As of May of last year, 2009, the MPS Board froze hiring and reduced contracting services. It made the tough cuts that any responsible administration would make in this tough economic climate. As a result of those cuts, the district saved $10 million and did so without firing employees. Since 2007, MPS has operated under a strategic plan that currently guides the district's administration. As a result of these changes, let's talk about some of the positives. Since 1999, the MPS graduation rate has increased almost 16%. Since 2002, the WKC math scores have increased by more than 13% for 4th graders and more than 15% for 8th graders at MPS. The last school year, MPS had 12,000 fewer student suspensions than the prior year. According to Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, MPS has become a national leader in STEM-based learning among children of color, and that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Now, are MPS scores high enough? No. Should we be satisfied with everything MPS is doing at this point? No. But should we put an end to the progress that's been made in recent years? No. Furthermore, do we really want to muddle the city's current priorities with yet another task? Do we really want to pit pupils against potholes, against police? No. The answer is no. I'm very proud to be here today, to first of all, be able to represent my constituency, to give you the opportunity to hear the sentiment of the people in this community. And I believe full heart, I full-heartedly believe that you will hear from them today. And I hope that that helps to shape your opinion on this issue, because these are the people, everyone in this room, who will be affected by the decision that you make. And I hope that you hear them. I'm also proud to be able to present an alternative, an alternative that tries to take everyone's interest into consideration and come to a middle ground. In place of an undemocratic, unaccountable mayoral takeover, we must find the means to empower the people of Milwaukee and build upon proven reforms. Together with Senator Coggs, I've worked with others to develop a plan for MPS that brings all stakeholders to the table when it comes to public education in Milwaukee. I'm also happy to say that some of the people who have signed on to this legislation are in the room, including, the second author on the bill is Representative Sinicky, who was on the panel, as well as Representative Polly Williams, who is in the audience. Rather than excluding concerned citizens, democratically-elected board members, and those who play a daily role in the education of our children, this plan embodies the partnership required to achieve true student success. At the same time, our plan provides the mayor of Milwaukee with an unprecedented role in the future of MPS, creating a structure of shared responsibility and joint accountability. Our plan is the best opportunity we have for reform, and it advances children's education. That's why we call it Race for Success: Reform and Advance Children's Education. Our plan is the true Race for Success. To ensure that sense of shared responsibility, Senator Coggs and I propose a system of school governance based on partnership between the democratically-elected MPS Board of Directors and the Milwaukee mayor. This proposal will provide the mayor with a substantial role in the selection of a new MPS superintendent. In addition, if MPS continues to see a need for academic improvement, the mayor should receive the same powerful line-item veto authority that is currently available to the governor in our state budget process. While the mayor will have the power to veto, the elected school board will also have the power to override such actions with a two-thirds vote. By creating this series of checks and balances, this new level of authority for Milwaukee's mayor will be held in check, while at the same time, a new level of accountability will be demanded for future school boards. In addition to investing new authorities in the office of the mayor, the Race for Success Act makes several other positive reforms for Milwaukee Public Education. After all, governance alone will not solve the problems that Milwaukee faces. And one of the things that I'd just like to say, that I think our legislation does, is actually propose something to happen, actually suggest something for change, as opposed to just saying, "Takeover, please trust us." These reforms include moving the school board elections to the November election cycle, guaranteeing higher turnout in local school board elections. They include allowing the mayor to appoint temporary board members in the event of a vacancy. They include eliminating the district's citywide board seat, a move that will both distance special interests from the election of this member and guarantee greater representation for parents of MPS students. Earlier, Representative Cologne had referred to, had expressed a concern about Latino representation on the school board. This particular provision would just about automatically guarantee that there would be increased Latino representation on the board. And we also, this act would increase opportunities for parental involvement by expanding the district's school governance councils. This act mandates the creation of a master's facilities plan for governing the repair, use, and closing of MPS underutilized and unused buildings. This plan increases financial accountability for MPS by centralizing the district's budget authority within the school board, rather than within individual schools. It creates new levels of accountability for principals at MPS. It establishes concrete standards for literacy and mathematics. It creates a framework for utilizing potential Race to the Top dollars, including the possibility of promised neighborhoods and smaller class sizes for incoming high school freshmen. Finally, the bill also establishes a Partnership for Success that consists of the mayor, the school board president, the school superintendent, and the common council president. Within one year after enactment of this proposal, this newly-established partnership will develop a plan for addressing the school district's unfunded liability. In addition, the partnership will be tasked with reaching out to both public and private institutions in order to gain support for public education in Milwaukee. There is no doubt, we need all hands on deck for education reform. Not simply rearranging the deck, but we need all hands on deck. Rearranging the deck is just simply letting the mayor appoint the next MPS superintendent and take control over the school district. But this is not, this doesn't begin the hard work necessary to move education forward in Milwaukee, nor is it the right direction for us to be moving. Make no mistake, the stakes have never been higher. I just told you about the disparities that we face in this nation, and aside from me expressing them to you off of a piece of paper, I'd like to express to you what it looks like when I drive through my neighborhood every day. When I see all the people who are unemployed, when I see all the children who are not graduating, who are not succeeding, I feel that, that's real. When I see the parents who desperately want something better for their children and their families, I feel that, that's real. I, just as much as anyone in this room, want to see reform. But do we just say, "The governor said so, so we do it"? Is that the reform that we take? And is there evidence, is this evidence-based reform? And if you look at the evidence, you will see that it is not the route that we should go for Milwaukee Public Schools. My constant mantra is that I do not accept the status quo. But again, my opposition to the status quo does not mean a support of mayoral takeover. Remember the lessons of Chicago, which can be seen in other cities with mayoral control. What's happened in those cities has resulted in a pervasive culture of individual blame, one directed at the schools and individuals, in particular, low-income communities of color. Increasing accountability in public education really means moving away from pointing the blame. Mayoral control of MPS will not increase accountability, just as it didn't in Chicago. Under the governor's proposed takeover plan, blame will continue to be pointed at the school board, only, under this takeover, the school board will actually have no power or authority to fix problems, since its powers will be minimized. Finally, remember what President Obama said, or didn't say, during his recent education speech in Madison. Finally, remember what President Obama said, or didn't say, during his recent education speech in Madison. President Obama never mentioned mayoral control of our schools. Let's stop it. There is no criteria that we have to take over Milwaukee Public Schools in order to qualify for race-to-the-top dollars. That is a myth, that is a farce, and we need to stop saying it. What President Obama did say in that speech in Madison was that he wants the community mobilized behind education. What he did say is that he wants greater parental involvement. I bet there are a few parents in this room. And he said-
Let me remind folks, the demonstrations of support are inappropriate at a centered hearing.
And the last thing that I'll mention that he said is that he wants collaboration, not divisiveness. This proposal has created an amazing amount of divisiveness in this community. When we should be focusing on the things that will bring us together, unite us, and repair us, we are focusing on an issue that is so divisive that it's unbelievable. In fact, I'd just like to share a quick anecdote, a quick story. I had the pleasure of having a phone conversation with Secretary Duncan. And when I had that conversation with him, I found it very interesting that many of my challenges to him were left unanswered. I found it very interesting that when I asked him specifically whether or not mayoral control was necessary for race-to-the-top dollars, he said, "No, absolutely not." And if you move forward thinking that that is the only thing that's going to get you this money, you're fooling yourselves. I found that a very interesting conversation. So here we are today, talking about how to move forward with MPS. In my opinion, the race for success, my bill and Senator Coggs' bill, is a true compromise that provides the mayor of Milwaukee with a substantial role in education while maintaining an elected school board that has the real powers and responsibilities. More than 150 years ago, the abolitionist and reformer Frederick Douglass described education as "the pathway to freedom." That maxim is as true today as it was then. But it's impossible to follow this pathway to freedom unless parents themselves have the freedom to influence the future of their children's education. That freedom depends not on mayoral takeover of our public schools but upon values embodied in the race for success. With that, I hope we can move forward in this effort to reform education in Milwaukee. I'd like to thank the people who came out today, who so passionately want to speak on this and have input on this issue. I want to thank every member of this panel, of this committee, for your time and commitment to this issue and to education in Wisconsin. And I hope that we can at least take from this a real discussion and a real pulling-up-our-sleeves moment to address some of the problems we face. Thank you very much.
I wanted to just say, of the three bills that we have here, I think there's Senate Bill 405, I'm totally against. And then, of course, the LRB 4037/1, I'm in favor of that. And also the one where you have the Senate Bill 437 about the state superintendent. I'm in support of that also, but I did raise, I did mention to you some concerns I have about the fact that our governor could probably have a little fun rewriting, doing some things to the bills that if, since it doesn't appear as if the vote is right now, as of today, for the takeover, that perhaps with this superintendent's bill, that somehow or another, the legislation can be kind of tweaked a little and we all of a sudden give the state superintendent the power to then take over the schools. So you said to me that that is not the intent of the Senate Committee in introducing this legislation. And I take your word for it, and I trust you. I trust you. Just want to make it clear, I trust the Senate Committee. And so hopefully, we won't have any funny, any kind of funny things going on. But I also just want to just tell you, just as a representative of Milwaukee, one of the senior members, you know, the fact that you all are here today, that this Senate Committee is meeting today, it says to a lot of us, that those of us, the parents and everybody in this community that's concerned about this mayoral takeover, we are being ignored. We are being ignored because if people was listening to the voices of the people in this community, the real voices of the people in this community. We have elected representatives that's duly elected by the people in this community. And we are speaking for those people. They elect us to speak for them. And so as Senator Coggs and Representative Griggs, we mentioned, some of the people that's for our bill, we have Representative Young, Representative Toz, Representative Kessler, Representative Sinicky, Representative, of course, myself. And we have other of our members in the Assembly that's not from Milwaukee, Representative Turner. These are all people that have told us they are with us and they do not support the mayoral takeover. There's a number of other legislators, outstate legislators, who also said that they don't support this because they don't want this happening in their community. And they've said to me, "Why would I do this to you when I don't want this happening in our community?" And the fact is, we have organized, the community has spoken, and we are being ignored. We are being ignored. And I'm saying to this committee, "Please do not ignore us. Hear what we are saying. We represent the city of Milwaukee. We represent the overwhelming majority of the students in the Milwaukee School Districts, African-American, Hispanic students. Listen to us." Again, if we had been listened to, like in other communities, when those parents come out and they protest, when they say that they don't want certain things happening in their school district, it's dropped. They drop it. In this instance, for some reason, the side that want to take over our school district, they're continuing. They're ignoring us. They're dividing our community. We have people who have been friends practically all their lives. We're on opposite sides right now. And we have the mayor who's going to run for governor. He's going to run for governor. And we got this big division that's going on in our community. We got, and this is not a healthy thing. There's a lot of pain and suffering going on in our community, not just in education, but a whole lot of other areas. And this is one thing that we should not have to be burdened with right now. If only the powers that be, the mayor and the governor, would listen to us in here in Milwaukee. We do not want this takeover. We know that our schools are in trouble. We know we need to do something. And we're the ones that have to do it. We're the ones that's going to have to do it. And I just plead with you. I plead with you. Listen. Now, I know there are people that's on the side for the takeover. Listen to them too. But I'm telling you, it's important that we maintain the power and control that we have in our board, that our board need to be able to function as a board with power and not some little impotent board. That is just ridiculous to even suggest that that proposal to take away the power of the board is a good thing for Milwaukee. I mean, that is just totally ridiculous. And I just ask you to listen to the concerns that have been expressed here. But the overwhelming majority of the elected representatives from the city of Milwaukee is opposed to this takeover, and I hope you all will just listen to it. Thank you.